Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Evening Meeting, February 7th, 2023. Thank you all for being here this evening. For those of you who are here for the first time, we want to welcome you and let you know a little bit about how our procedure begins. We start out with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we make any agenda announcements, which are basically changes to the existing agenda, and any changes that would occur with regard to any walk-on items. Then we have presentations. So presentations are an opportunity for the community to recognize individuals, organizations, or events that are important to our community and that are about to take place. There will be two presentations tonight, and once those are concluded, we begin with the actual business of the agenda. And so tonight, I'd like you all to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'd also ask if you can indulge us with a moment of silence before we begin our regular meeting. Thank you. That moment of silence is also a recognition of Commissioner Glassman's 70th birthday.
There's no place I would rather be, Mayor.
We're praying for you, Commissioner. We're praying for you. So, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the--
Commissioner Herbst. Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sterman.
Mayor Trentalles.
Here. So, full attendance. So, we have a few agenda announcements. CR-4, the CAM and Exhibit 1 were revised to clarify some of the information given for Item K, Pages 10 and 11. CR-5, Exhibits 3 and 4 were revised on Pages I, 7, 64, 65, and the Exhibit C, Title Page of the lease agreement. CR-11, the CAM and Exhibit 3 were revised to correct the address to 1028 Southeast 13th Terrace. And R2, the CAM was revised to clarify information given in the background detail. Also, the City Manager's request CP-2 to be removed from the agenda, and there will be a walk-on motion approving an agreement for the La Solis Isles undergrounding of overhead utilities, Ferrera Construction Southern Division Company, Inc. That affects Commission District 2. Having said all that, are there any other announcements or changes to the agenda? There being none, so I'd ask that someone make a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda.
Some of--
Second.
Moving seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and now the minutes and the agenda have been approved. So, let's begin with the presentations. Tonight, we begin with Vice Mayor Sterman, who's going to present a proclamation regarding the American Heart Month in the city of Fort Lauderdale. You noticed that many of us are wearing red. Vice Mayor.
Why, thank you. Before I begin, once again, I want to do a reenactment of earlier today. Steve, a happy birthday. We got approval. This is less than a dollar amount needed for--
The 70 is bigger than the cake. Vice Mayor, this makes it look like I'm only seven. You have to just turn it. Thank you. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Steve. Okay, can I have Broward Health come up?
As Broward Health is coming up, I'll-- that's a couple words. I am so honored to have my colleagues up here. Broward Health is, in my opinion--
These are your people, Dr. Sterman.
These are my folks, my buds. I mean, what they do on a daily basis is one thing, but during hurricanes and disasters, this team comes through. They are the most incredible group of people. I'm gonna read a proclamation in a second. If you want a round of applause, number one. This is cardiac. And if anybody in the audience is thinking of having a heart attack, now is the time to do so.
If you have to think about it, it's too late.
Okay. Okay, I hate reading in public. Everybody knows. I'll do my best, but you please forgive me. I want to thank Heather, the CEO, and all of my cardiology colleagues up here. Whereas-- ready, guys? Heart disease is a leading cause of death in the United States, claiming nearly 700,000 lives every year. Whereas, heart disease causes arteries leading to the heart to become clogged. Whereas, in 1964, President Johnson issued the first proclamation declaring February as American Heart Month. Whereas, on average, someone has a heart attack every 34 seconds in the United States. Whereas, heart disease refers to several types of heart conditions, coronary artery disease being the most common. Whereas, the impact of heart disease in the United States affects more than $200 billion each year in healthcare costs. Whereas, understanding heart risk for heart disease can reduce them and help people live a healthier life. Now, therefore, we, the City Commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, do hereby proclaim February as Heart Healthy Month.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you so much.
Next, I would like to invite our fire rescue chief, Steve Golin, to recognize fire rescue personnel who have successfully completed the Florida Smoke Diver Course. Chief.
Good evening. Happy birthday.
Thank you, Chief.
This evening, Mayor, Commissioner, and residents of Fort Lauderdale, I want to take this opportunity to highlight our fire rescue employees that have gone above expectations to better serve our community. On January 7th, Captain Robert Ricci and firefighter Christopher Suarez successfully completed what is known as the Florida Smoke Divers Course. The Florida Smoke Divers Course was established in 1972 and was the first program of its kind in the United States. Due to complexity and difficulty of this course, since 2013, only 89 firefighters in the world have successfully completed this rigorous training with an average class completion ratio of less than 20%. To put it into perspective, their class started with over 150 applicants, and only 12 were able to earn the title of Florida Smoke Diver. Within our own Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue Department, there are only four that have achieved this designation, and Captain Ricci is the first officer in the department to achieve this designation. To paint a clear understanding of the challenges a firefighter faces during this class is rather difficult and could best be summarized by comparing it to special forces training but for firefighters. Just imagine crawling on your hands and knees where temperatures on the floor are close to 450 degrees and a ceiling temperature approaching 1,000, all while managing cognitive thinking and problem-solving reasoning. You are doing this in a multi-floor building for two hours while encountering various obstacles looking for an object the size of a silver dollar. If you don't find this object, then you do not have the honor of calling yourself a Florida Smoke Diver. Please help me congratulate these gentlemen on this admirable accomplishment, and know if you ever have an emergency in Fort Lauderdale, these are the faces you want to see show up. Gentlemen, please come up.
But it's okay beyond the size. It's in the center. Thank you so much, and thank you for your service to our community. So, next, we approach the agenda, and tonight, I would ask each member of the commission to see if there is any interest in pulling any item from the consent agenda portion of this agenda. What does that mean? That means that there is an area on the agenda that is regarding consent resolutions and consent purchases. We normally vote on those all at once, but if there is a member of the commission who wishes to pull any item to discuss and vote on it separately, now would be the time that I would hear from each of the members of the commission in order to determine whether or not we'll vote on those separately. If there's an item on which any of you in the public would like to speak on separately, so far, I've not received any requests to speak on any consent agenda item except from Mr. Jaffe, who's only here regarding questions on CR-10, so we won't pull that item. But if there's any member of the commission who would like to pull a consent agenda item, we will vote on it separately, and we'll discuss it separately. So, starting with Commissioner Herbst, is there any item on the consent agenda that you would like to pull?
No.
None. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman. No, it'd be a consent.
No.
None. Commissioner Glassman?
Thank you, Mayor. CM-1.
CM-1?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor?
I must be getting close to 70. We think alike. CM-1 was the only one for me.
Okay. All right. So, other than CM-1, are there any other items? Mr. City Manager, you just wanted that one item pulled, right?
Correct, Mayor.
That was--
CP-2.
CP-2, which will be taken off the agenda, except for CM-1 and CP-2. Do I hear a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda?
No move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst. Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, so those consent agenda items are now approved. So, if you are here on any of those consent agenda items, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you can now move. Your item has now been approved. So, let's pick up CM-1. Commissioner Glassman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I pulled this not necessarily for the content of the agenda item, but because I just wanted to have a general discussion, City Manager, about events, again, on the Barrier Island. You know that I ask about this all the time when we have these agenda items. But in particular, we need to get a little clarity. I think the residents deserve to know every event that's gonna be happening in our city. Right now, there's a lot of confusion. For instance, why was the NHL All-Star Week not on the city calendar? Obviously, it had a big impact on traffic, on A-1A, Birch, all of the other streets, crossing over to the Barrier Island included. But I think we need to get some clarity there, and really make sure that the residents know what's coming, maybe even if it's just that something's been applied to happen with the Special Events Committee. But right now, as I said, a lot of residents feel there's just a real inconsistency about what makes the city calendar and what does not.
Well, that's not the first time you asked for this, so--
So, I'm gonna ask our director from Parks to come up and talk about the calendar and how it works--
Although we have a calendar.
Yeah, we do.
We do. So, what's the ask tonight?
Well, for instance, though, the NHL, was it like five days they were in town? And a lot on the Barrier Island, but it wasn't even on the city calendar, is what I'm saying. And residents just want to know everything that's happening and what might impact them in terms of traffic, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm just saying, how do we determine that? When does something make the calendar or not?
So, once the items are approved, it makes the city calendar. And as far as I know, Commissioner, the NHL hockey was on the calendar. I know it's on there now, so I'm not for sure if they were looking at the right calendar or if they didn't see it. But from what I understand, that was on there as well as any other special event. Once it's approved by this commission, then it goes on the event calendar.
So, as soon as something is approved, it makes it on the calendar?
Correct.
That day, that night, next day, right away?
It would be the next day.
So, when you say you're not sure what calendar they were looking at, are there multiple calendars?
Well, I'm just saying, as far as I know, the NHL was on the calendar, so I'm not for sure if they looked at a calendar, it was not on there. I'm not for sure what calendar they may have been looking at. But if you go on our city website, on the main page, it says Special Events. If you click on that, then it'll give you the calendar, and if you click on that, the NHL is on there now. Again, I think it was on there right after the event was approved. So, if they were looking at it prior to the event being approved, it would not have been on there. We don't put anything on the event calendar until this commission has approved it.
I'll find out, because I'm pretty sure that was brought to my attention after the event was approved, but prior to the event--
Okay.
I mean, right now, it's on the calendar. That's great, but it's over. So--
Okay. Yeah, if you can find that out, or they can give me a call, and we can figure out what happened there.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Thank you, Phil. And with that, Mayor, I'm--
Okay, like Steve, I apologize to CM 1. It's not specific for that, but I just want to make one comment, and then we could go on. Events on the beach, especially this weekend, one of the issues was poor signage and traffic, and one of the concerns were people that were coming eastbound. Apparently, there was not good signage, and like the temporary signs saying road, traffic ahead, detours and whatnot, was a big issue this weekend. So, I don't have a problem with the event itself, but it was like to have traffic and city staff a little more diligent about traffic if I can. Signage, actually.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor...
I'm not quite sure. What is the ask? I'm trying to...
Well, you know how they have those signs that they put up with the blinking lights that says US 1 closed or traffic ahead? Apparently, this weekend, they didn't have a lot of those signs up. People coming down 17th and La Solis, and I mean, that was a big concern in my pre-agenda meeting, that people were complaining about the traffic. They didn't know ahead of time what to expect. Usually, we do a good job, but I think this week, it seemed to have lasted a little.
So, it is noted?
I'll echo that, because I heard similar concerns expressed during my meeting as well.
It is noted, and what we're going to do is, rather than the city put up the signs, we're going to ask the event coordinator to rent digital signage and put more digital signage in a greater radius from the event location.
Thank you, City Manager.
And how do we ensure compliance? How do we know that they're going to do it?
So, I'm going to ask Phil again, who works with the coordination of the special events, and if any police staff can also assist with showing or determining how we place signage, if you can explain that.
So, I can say that on the larger events, if there's an MOT required, then they would be showing how the maintenance of traffic would work along with signage, so we can make sure, to the City Manager's point, that when the MOTs come in, that there's additional signage and plenty of signage up to show any kind of maintenance of traffic issues. If it's just a lot of people on the beach, then, you know, we could maybe put out a few signs to say, you know, heavy traffic ahead, things like that, but that probably would be something that we would have to deal with on a case-by-case basis, if it does not have a maintenance of traffic plan.
I noticed that there are electronic billboards that have been put up, for example, this coming weekend, indicating that the roads will be blocked off during a certain time. So, there have been some attempts, at least on the part of the city, to alert people in advance of events that are happening on the beach and to anticipate, you know, heavier-than-usual traffic. I don't know what happened this past weekend, but I do know, I've noticed, certain electronic billboards before you cross over the drawbridges, that we have alerts to, you know, these events that are happening. So, I think we had, I mean, Commissioner Herbst, you're saying that some people in your district were commenting how we didn't alert folks in enough places, I guess, or enough time?
So, it was a similar suggestion, that we have more of those movable signs out there, particularly coming down 17th Street. So, there are folks, obviously, occasionally, every once in a while, people from my district all the way make it downtown and get as far as 17th Street and occasionally go to Harbor Shops and stuff.
What are they doing down there?
You know, it's, I keep trying to get them to stay up there. I tell them they don't need to, but, you know, once in a while, they feel compelled.
Now, keep them coming. We love them there.
So, but, yeah, no, a couple of folks noticed when they were on 17th Street, going to go out to the beach, that they got caught in traffic that they didn't anticipate. So, I think that was really more the area where it would have been beneficial.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we will amplify the signage and ask the event proposer to be responsible for that.
Okay, thank you. Would someone like to move CM 1? Moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and CM 1 is now approved. Moving on to motions. M1, sub motion approving an event agreement and extended road closure beyond 10 a.m. on the Barrier Island for the St. Patrick's Day Parade and Festival. We have two people signed up to speak. I just want you to know that I attended one of the meetings last night. It was at the Beach Community Center. There were about a dozen people who participated, so I'm curious to hear what these folks are just going to have to say tonight. Mr. Petrillo, followed by Mr. Spalding. Is Mr. Spalding here?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I find it ironic that I'm actually up here speaking against an event, but I'm not speaking necessarily against the event. What I'm speaking against is, this city has, over the last few decades, struggled to stay away from the spring break moniker, and while we still have it going on our beach, our hospitality community has been working hard to make sure we don't bill ourselves as a spring break place to enjoy. We have been doing the parade downtown for a dozen years, and I've been involved since the inception. I've been very supportive of the parade, and I think it suits it well, because during the Saturday mornings, the weekend crowds are not downtown. The downtown crowd is obviously off. We serve a VIP breakfast for over 300 people, and it's been a successful event. I'm not here because we have restaurants downtown. I have restaurants on the beach, and candidly, I would probably do have a better economic impact to my business keeping it on the beach. I'm here because I do not think it's a good idea to throw a parade along A-1A at the height of spring break. You know, I heard that it's a family event, which it is, but it's also the second-most alcohol-feud holiday on the calendar, outside of New Year's Eve. And my sales for that Saturday are 80% higher on that Saturday during the same month during the spring break parade. So, yes, it is a family parade, but it is also fueled by alcohol. And I think that putting that in the middle of spring break, where the spring breakers are typically on the beach anywhere, they don't make it to downtown because they don't want to come off the beach, but I can assure you that they will take part in this parade. And from my understanding, what I hear is because of the Clydesdales. Well, you know, we have a parade up at Florida State, and we get the Clydesdales all the time. And if you need the Clydesdales to come back, we sell enough Budweiser that they will be happy to listen to our requests. So, I urge you, listen, I think the spring break parade is wonderful. I just get scared that we're putting it, it's going to be gas on a fire when we put it next to the college kids being entertained on spring break. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, Tim, in this meeting that I attended last night, it was suggested that, yes, while it is going to take place in the middle of spring break on a Saturday, that these two observations were made. Number one, that the kids in spring break don't really come to the beach until after 2 o'clock or so.
Okay. And I think we've all been down there, and we've witnessed differently.
I'm just telling you the comments that were heard. And that the spring breakers is kind of like a changing of the guard. The ones that are there all week leave on Saturday, and the ones that are arriving get there Saturday late or Sunday, so there's not, the crowds don't materialize on Saturday as much as they do on other days.
Actually, that's 100% inaccurate, okay? What happens is, the spring breakers leave on Friday to hit their destination on Friday night, okay, for the week going forward. The people who are leaving their week leave on Sunday. So, Saturday is really the true crossover day and the highest impact. And I just find it ironic, we just, you know, two commissioners and the mayor were just commenting on how many issues we have on the Barrier Island, with traffic, with signage, with all these events and the complaints from the residents. That's why I find it somewhat surprising that we're now going to put it, we're taking a successful parade that has been going on 12 years without instance and putting it already on in an area that has issues with noise, traffic, already contentious by the residents. So, that's why I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Petrillo? There being none, thank you. Mr. Spalding?
Good evening, Commissioners and, good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. First, I got to apologize for my sloppy handwriting. I actually wanted to speak on CM 1.
Oh.
And I was hoping that when you said nobody signed up to speak, that you might, you know, raise your hand and say, anybody want to speak publicly about it? But you kind of didn't, so I'm not quite sure what to do. But what I wanted to talk about was not specific to CM 1 or CM 2. It was about the signage and a way, you know, same thing, closures of the roads, which by all means, close them all up, but, you know, put some signage up where we can see it prior to getting to the road closure. I ran into this not for an event, but for the swing bridge, which was closed, but I didn't know it until I actually got to the bridge instead of like maybe on 15th Street. So, I was thinking, possibly, I'm not looking for events on the page to find out whether there's a road closure, but maybe a section on the page that might say traffic advisory event or not event for, you know, just better signage, better placement of signage, so that we know before we get to where the road is closed, that it's closed and it's not necessarily involving an event.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, and I just would ask the City Manager and the City Attorney, years ago, there was, I believe the city was sued over a signage issue by 3M. I just want us to be careful that we know what we're doing with regards to what signs can say, cannot say, if they need to be approved, part of special events, part of special permitting, but we really need to check this out very carefully and then go back in time and look at the lawsuit that was filed against the city over these kinds of signage issues. Just over the signage, over the fact that we just wrote whatever we wanted to do, that it might have interfered with whatever the event was, that it wasn't a permitted sign, just a lot of issues. So, I'm just saying, we need to be careful, and we need to go back and look at this historically so that we, you know, we just have to be careful. Thanks.
We will observe that. Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Spalding. Does anyone have any comments with regard to this idea of the St. Patrick's Day Parade and Festival occurring on Fort Lauderdale Beach? I guess it's the Barrier Island Commissioner District 2. Would you like to...
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'll give you a brief history of what happened. I was approached a few weeks ago by the event organizers and city staff, including the police and Parks and Rec, and I was asked if I thought it was okay that we moved the St. Patrick's Day Parade to the Barrier Island along A-1A following the same route of the Pride Parade, where traffic would still flow in each direction on Birch, parallel to A-1A. And I basically said, look, I'm not going to make this decision unilaterally, and I recommended that they please attend in the next couple of days a Central Beach Alliance. So, that was set up. Major Schultz came, parade organizers came, and we also had over 100 people from the neighborhood attend the Central Beach Alliance Membership Meeting, and everything was gone through very carefully. I will tell you that Barrier Island residents are very generous in terms of any kind of quality of life issues that many people probably would be a little frustrated with in terms of many events in the neighborhood, but they understand that they share the beach with everybody, and they understand that the Barrier Island is an economic engine for the city, and we want to be good neighbors, and we want to have good events and good times, and especially good family times. So, the presentation was made, lots of questions from the residents, and basically, at the end of the discussion, that was very thorough, the residents said, look, we understand that you're telling us that the route is too short downtown because of the construction, especially in and around La Solis Oceanside Park. They said they understood that there were no staging areas for the parade. They understood that the Clydesdales would have no area, no staging area, and not enough of a parade to make it worth their while, and they did want to come. So, the Barrier Island residents were very understanding. They listened, and they said, okay, we understand all of the reasons why this can't happen downtown this year. But they also made it very clear that they thought that this was a one-year, okay, one year, let it be on the Barrier Island, but let's not make a habit of it, and we really want to make sure that this returns to downtown, because this is historically a downtown event, a downtown parade. So, I think that they were very understanding. They were very generous, and they basically voted overwhelmingly. I don't even think there was anyone that said absolutely not. There might have been one person, but they said, okay. They said, we're fine with this for this year, but basically understand that this is for this year only. And that was what happened at the meeting.
Mr. Rogers, Ben, can you come up here for a second? Give us some information, perhaps, on what the status of the construction and the completion of the tunnel top open space is going to be? Because this parade is going to happen like at the end of the first week of March. What's going to happen in a month's time? Can we expect to see a completion of the top by then, or is it still going to be in disarray?
It's probably still going to be in disarray. I talked with FDOT construction team yesterday and a little bit this morning. They're in the process of seeing if they can make construction adjustments to maybe open up some additional space, kind of like they did for the boat parade, to accommodate it. But right now, with the information provided, the event date and where they're going to be at in the construction are very close to each other, and I wouldn't feel comfortable advising to do downtown because of that unless FDOT can provide an alternative measure.
Okay, thank you.
So, just to echo what Commissioner Glassman said, this, for the moment, is a one-off. I mean, this is not a permanent move. This is just because of construction.
Well, so, let's, Major Schultz, can you come up here, please? My biggest concern is the combination of a St. Patrick's Day Parade and spring break. You know, you're adding thousands of people onto the beach because of the parade, where there's going to be thousands more because of spring break. So, Major Schultz, can you give us some comfort as to what you could expect the city to be able to do in order to maintain a stable environment during the time in which the parade will take place, given the fact that we have a combination of paradegoers and fund seekers who are here for spring break?
Sure. So, the beach has, for years, been a resurgence of its spring break location. One of the business owners who is intimately familiar with that, I think, has left, but Mr. Petrillo was right. It's for sure going to bring people. It has for the last, probably, decade. We've each year seen a good amount of spring breakers attend. I will also tell you that I think we, along with fire, have done a very good job in tending to those spring breakers. We've taken many steps to be preventative. We've put barriers along A-1A to force them to use crosswalks. We have both uniformed and non-uniformed response teams and activities that have kept it certainly, I think, at a level that's respectable, and whenever there's a problem that arises, we address it immediately. Now, in reference to a parade out there during that weekend, as Mr. Petrillo said, there is some who come in on Friday, but certainly, having worked it for many years, I see both some that come in Saturday and Sunday in addition to Friday. But also, there are predictors that we use. When you look at the number of colleges and the size of the colleges that are on break on certain weekends, that weekend does not give me as much of a concern about as many people as other weekends would be more attended. That's not to say that we can say that for sure. What we can look at is, we can get information on incoming flights, and we can get information on what colleges and their student attendants are gone at that time on vacation. That all being said, we already have the infrastructure in place for the parade. We already have the barricades on A-1A. It is a parade that will stretch from approximately Bayshore Drive down to East La Solis and end at La Solis, and we are looking at an hour and a half to two-hour closure for the parade, I'm sorry, for the parade length, pro a two to two-and-a-half-hour total closure of the beach. This is not, and I want to reiterate this, this is not a race. This is not a marathon closure, which are many, many hours, much longer.
So, is the parade going to start at Bayshore Drive?
Well, it stages just north of that.
Is the, Greg, is the parking lot at Vista Mar going to be available for use?
I will ask Ben Rogers. Actually, I'd like to ask staff to come up, because we're going to be talking about this, if Phil can come up, too, just to provide reference to the city commission.
Because in terms of a staging area, that would be really helpful to have, you know, that huge park, but why is that being delayed? What is causing that delay?
Yeah, so, we can look at making maybe temporary improvements to...
Actually, I'd like to ask staff to come up because we're going to be talking about this, if Phil can come up too, just to provide reference to the city commissioner.
Because in terms of a staging area, that would be really helpful to have, you know, that huge park. But why is that being delayed? What is causing that delay?
Yeah, so we can look at making maybe temporary improvements to have it as a staging facility. But in the current state right now, I think there's too many risk issues on having a lot of people on that property.
Okay. So it's not available for?
Not, not in its current state.
All right. Well, while we have you up here, when is that going to be done?
So we are working through the conversations now with the contractor to bring them back. I think we have a meeting scheduled later this week with their attorneys, and I'm hoping that in the next two commission meetings, we can bring back an agreement that the commission could review and consider.
Okay. Not soon then. Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions for Major Schultz? Okay. Thank you. So Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, no, no.
Additional thoughts, I mean?
Again, my thought was it's a one-year while they're redoing La Solis. I don't see the better alternative.
Okay. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any additional thoughts on this?
So I had talked with PD yesterday, and they expressed similar concerns to me. One of the thoughts that had occurred to me is perhaps alternating it between the beach and downtown, just something I put out there for consideration. I think we're going to eventually get to a point where downtown is back and ready for business. Obviously, when we start working on Heizenga Park, that's going to have an impact on the parade route as well. So those are just some of the thoughts that I've had as it relates to this. Thank you.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
I feel comfortable with the discussion where we said it's a one-time event because of the rerouting from downtown to the beach. Other than that, I don't have a input for us concerned. I want to leave with the commissioners of that district.
Okay. So to wrap this up, you know, at the meeting last night, it seemed that the majority opinion was to support the beach as a venue. Most folks were not concerned about the combination of the St. Patrick's Day Parade and, and spring break happening at the same time. I, I dispute that. I think there will be a problem, but let us look at the other considerations. One of the major considerations is the construction at the tunnel area, which I think is significant because there will be crowds there, there will be traffic there, there will be tremendous impact there. And I'm very concerned about the safety of individuals who participate in the parade and spectators as well from trying to navigate that, that location. I think that, you know, keep in mind that the original purpose of this parade, in some people's minds, was economic development, trying to revive the La Solis commercial area that had suffered a significant downturn as a result of the recession that we, we suffered from, began in 2009, 2010. And here we are a dozen years later. I think we've been successful in reviving La Solis Boulevard. There's been a tremendous amount of interest in living, working, and enjoying the La Solis Boulevard area. Nonetheless, the tradition still is that having it downtown is part of the, is part of the Fort Lauderdale experience. And so, you know, I'm personally torn as to what we should do there. But I think in the end, it seems that the organizers want to have it on the beach. It seems that our police department feels capable of maintaining the, the order and the dignity of the beach during, during the time in which both events will occur at the same time. So based on, you know, what our police department has said and what the community has, has decided, I think that doing it once and letting this be the, an experience that we should try to learn from, and we'll see what happens going forward in the years ahead. But, but it seems that the parade should probably move forward on the Barrier Island, and, and I would entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and one is approved, and good luck, folks.
Mayor, I'm really happy also because, you know, I did order a bunch of those ankle wigs for the horses in case where the Clydesdales could not perform and we needed to just find alternate arrangements. And now I can return those ankle wigs.
You think of everything.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
M2, motion approving an event agreement and related road closure for dining in the streets. Anyone have any questions with regard to this? There being none, would someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. This is a first timer, isn't it? This is up in, near?
No.
Setting up tents and tables?
Happening for a long time.
On 33rd Street?
Yeah.
Yep, this is a repeat.
Fish tails.
Right. Blue jean blues, fish tails, that whole street over there.
Been going on for a while. You've never attended?
You never?
You got to get up to my district more, Mayor.
Never invited me.
Well, it's, it's, it's just past the Greek Isles Restaurant, so you got to go one block further.
Yeah. It's just over the border from District Two, just over the border.
I don't get out much.
Okay.
M3, motion approving agreement for the annual asphalt sidewalk and ADA improvements, $1 million, two-year total. Anyone have any questions with regard to this? There being none, someone like to move the item?
Before, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Regarding this particular item, just questions about the opportunity for sidewalks as well, understanding that the large portion of this grant is allocated for the asphalt and road paving. So if you could answer regarding sidewalks forth?
Correct. So the, the bulk portion of the work will be for asphalt repaving, like you mentioned, Commissioner? And there are some, there will be some efforts for repairs of depressed or cracked sidewalks?
Is there an existing list of waiting lists or depressed sidewalks that will be considered?
Our director for Public Works is going to answer that.
Alan Dodd, Public Works Director. Typically, what we do is we're repairing the roadways. We also look at the sidewalks and do that work in conjunction. We also have a separate sidewalk program that we run where we go and based on complaints that we receive from residents, if there's tripping hazards or cracks in the sidewalk, we will go and look at it. We can use this contract as well to address sidewalk issues. So we have two different contractual means to address sidewalks. We do have a running list of sidewalk problems, and we work those off as part of that longer-term program, just like we do with roadways.
That working list for the sidewalks, do you keep a date as to when they came in? So say, for instance, someone is waiting two years, is it documented that that request was made in, in 2020?
Yes, Commissioner. I have a spreadsheet. I receive it on average about once every one to two weeks, and it shows me all of the complaints that our folks working on, when we receive them, and when they anticipate that the sidewalk will be repaired.
All right. That was one of the questions at my commission meeting, my agenda meeting with my community on last night. So thank you.
So, Mr. Dodd, if you're receiving complaints tonight about sidewalk needs, I just want you to know that the sidewalk on One East Broward between here and the county building, every time I go down that sidewalk, it's a minefield of broken concrete. Somehow, the roots of the trees, these are, these are the trees that shade that sidewalk, have completely disrupted the surface there. So if you think about it, you might want to see what we can do to repair that because they are definitely a lawsuit waiting to happen.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, someone like, did someone move the item, M3, yet?
So moved.
So moves, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yep.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M3 is approved. M4, sub motion approving an agreement for wastewater conveyance system, long-term rehabilitation, various pre-qualified pool of contractors. No one has signed up to speak. Would someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Been moved, or seconded?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M4 is now approved.
Now, this is, I know we just approved it, but that's, that's like a four-year, $40 million. That's the first half.
That is, it's, well, two years, it says.
M4 was, yeah, but that's the first half. There's another, there's another two years after that.
Do you understand the question?
No. What is your question, Vice Mayor?
That's the first half of a four-year, the first two years, and then there's another 20-minute meeting coming after that.
I'll ask Director Dodd to share the schedule of values for this project.
Mayor and Commissioners, the initial term for the contract is a, is two years, but then it has three one-year renewal options after that, which gets us to a total of five years, which culminates in the $48,750,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions with regard to M4? Okay, moving on to M5, sub motion approving the purchase of police department firearms, lose police distributors, $620,036. Anyone have any questions with regard to this item?
I do have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
The question is the determination to, for the selection of firearm that was chosen, if we can get an explanation why that particular firearm was chosen?
Police chief will answer that.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This came about after approximately a year of research by our firearms and our training people. They tested multiple handguns. They also conducted studies or surveys of what had been approved by other agencies, including the FBI, so this Glock was chosen. It meets a lengthy list of criteria. It met the FBI's drop test. It's a handgun that is in use by most of our officers at this point already, so it will be an easy transition for us.
All right. And just for clarity, this will replace, this will make it uniformed across the department. Everyone will be carrying the same firearm.
Correct. The goal is to standardize the firearm, the ammunition, the training. This puts us as the owners of the firearms instead of the individual officers with various different types of guns.
Thank you.
So this is just like a handgun, right?
It's a handgun, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Who's Lou? It sounds like, oh, let's go buy $620,000 worth of firearms. Does anyone know anyone? Yeah, I know a guy, I got a guy named Lou.
No, Lou is a very reputable gun dealership in Bay County, well-established, been there for many years.
All right, good. Just reminds me of growing up in the New York City area, and go find Lou.
Steve, you don't want to piss off Lou.
I guess not. At least not before the contract. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lou, okay.
He's got quite an operation.
I'm telling you. Okay.
Okay, would someone like to move the item?
So moved. I don't want to, I don't want to upset Lou.
Second.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M5 is now approved. We now move on to a section of our, of our agenda called Neighbor Presentations. This is an opportunity for someone who has signed up prior to this meeting to come and speak before the city commission with regard to a specific subject matter. Is Roderick Newkirk here? Mr. Newkirk, please step forward. You want to talk about customer service with entities.
Hello, how everybody doing? Okay. I also want to thank you all. I know we have some new people here on the panel. Thank you so much. I went to your, to your state of the, to your state of the speech address, and then I had a nine-year housing fight, but it's wrapping up now, and thanks to, you know, the customer service from your office, you know, I really appreciate that. I'm here to talk about customer service and government entities because it's very important because, you know, by being a government, you know, you deal with a large range of issues. And so the customer service definitely have to be efficient on it. So, you know, I've got great customer service through the government entities, but I've also have got not good customer service through entities. And the problem with that is, is it caused a lot of problems on that end. And what happened was, I did an event out to the beach. So when I did an event out to the beach, I had spoke with Ms. Beth. Ms. Beth is through the, when I spoke with Ms. Beth, Ms. Beth was through the, what area was Ms. Beth in? She was through the transportation area. And what happened was, I was trying to get the directions to the, to the beach, to the areas in the beach where I needed to have the event at. So, you know, she didn't help me out very well with that. But I got in contact with Mr. Chris, with Mr. Chris's office over here. So his office helped me out very well. Ms. Lunda, she was very well attentive to me. She took care of me. And not only did she get the addresses that I need for the beach and around the beach, she got everything that I needed and what's set, and I had a nice event out there. So I had really appreciated that. But also too, what I was addressing about the customer services, because sometimes when you address things or when you need things taken care of, you don't get such good customer service. And the reason why it's very important in government entities because of all the things that is dealt with in government entities. And the problem is with that, like, say, for instance, if you have a case manager, a social worker, anything like that. So if you have a case manager, a social worker, you have someone there that's going all out for you, you know, going all out for you, making sure that, you know, you get the things that you need, making sure that you get all the services that you need. But the problem is, you also too have some case managers, social workers, which all of it goes into one thing that, you know, don't try their hardest, or, you know, don't get you this, or don't get you that. And then the problem with that is, is, you know, everybody's not going to speak up, everybody don't know, you know, everybody don't know how to go about things, and then they're taking your word or that person's word, you know, for that. And so when they're taking that person's word, then that's how you also get misled on other things, and then you don't get the things, you know, that you need to get. And, you know, so I wanted to bring that to the panel's attention about the customer service and government entities, because, you know, it's a very, very important thing. And I really do appreciate the help that y'all previously gave me with the emails that I sent you guys all out. I sent you guys all our emails on situations. And then, you know, you have people from the components that get back with me. I grew up in the city of Fort Lauderdale. I'm very proud of the progress, you know. I've seen a lot of things since I changed my life. I changed my life when I was 25 years old, before like prime example, this right here, you never used to see that. So, you know, with the opening up, you know, with inviting people out, with the meeting of the different officials, with the job fair right here. So, you know, I'm very, very proud of that. But at the same time, you know, we can do better in that area with more of the customer service and government entities. It's just not just with the, with this city, it's, you know, city, states. But at the same time, you know, we can start here because I do want us to end up, you know, being the best.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions of Mr. Newkirk? There being none, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Newkirk.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions. R1, appointment of board and committee members. Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the names?
Yes. For the February 21st resolution, nuisance abatement board, Joel Slotnick, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Cemetery system board of trustees, Scott Bursa, nominated by Vice Mayor Sterman. Community service boards, Amy Schimmelfang, nominated by Vice Mayor Sterman. Noise control advisory committee, Tim Petrillo, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. Rocco Ferreira, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. Miguel Pilgrim, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. And Gina Ellis, nominated by Commissioner Beasley-Pitman. And for tonight's resolution, aviation advisor board, David Ash, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. John Fratsanis, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Fred Strassel, alternate position, nominated by Vice Mayor Sterman. That's for board of adjustment. Charter revision board, Harrison Grand Williams, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Community appearance board, Cabot Edward, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Miguel Wright, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Education advisor board, Juliette Gray Williams, nominated by Commissioner Beasley-Pitman. Fire Rescue Facilities Bond Issue Blue Ribbon Committee, Frank Snadicker Jr., nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Marine Advisory Board, Elizabeth George, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Theodore Morley, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Let's see. Noise Control Advisory Committee, Renee Quinn, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Chad McCory, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. William Brown, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Planning and Zoning Board, Sherry McCartney, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. Public Art and Placement Advisor Board, Lisa Burgess, nominated by Vice Mayor Sterman. Twenty-twenty-three Walk of Fame Induction Committee, Gina Ellis, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. And we have a few other names that we want to add to the...
Please go ahead.
For tonight, Twenty-twenty-three Walk of Fame, Patrick Chevlosky, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Citizens Committee of Recognition, Romney Rogers and Betty Shelley, both nominated by Vice Mayor Sterman. Code Enforcement Board, Lucky Monani, nominated by Vice Mayor Sterman. And as discussed earlier, the Risk Management Committee, Commissioner John C. Herbst. And that rounds it out.
Okay, are there any of the names that any member of the commission would like to nominate tonight?
There's a, one clarification, I'm going to, Fred Strassel, Board of Adjustment. It's, he's not as an alternate, though. I, I wanted to put him as a member, not an alternate.
There currently isn't a vacancy, but...
Because I have no, there's no appointees of mine that are on there, if I'm not mistaken.
Are they not consensus appointments, or are they individual?
They're all consensus appointments.
Yeah. So, so it's, this particular board, it's not like an individual?
No, no, I understand, I understand. So the only vacancy was a, was a alternate?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's aware, I've, I've talked with him with regards to that, but...
Just wanted, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, do I hear, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Second.
A resolution of City Commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as fourth needs attached here to and a made part here of Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and I'd like to thank those individuals who've now committed themselves to participate in the boards and committees, and thank you for the sacrifice you make in making Fort Lauderdale the beautiful place that it is.
And just for clarification, Commissioner Glassman, that was as amended correctly, to add those additional names.
Oh, thank you. R2, Resolution Declaring the City's Official Intent to Reimburse Itself From the Proceeds of the Special Obligation Line of Credit Agreement Regarding the Public, Police and Public Safety Project. Does anyone have any questions with regard to this resolution? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Please call the rule.
A resolution of City Commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, declaring the official ten of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures for capital improvements by incurring debt, maximum principal amount of debt, nature, project costs, authorizing incidental action and repeal of prior inconsistent resolutions. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R2 is now approved. R3, Resolution Delegating Authority to the City Manager to Submit a Grant Application to the Florida Inland Navigation District Waterway Assistance Program for one million dollars to renovate the Cooley's Landing Marina. Anyone have any questions with regard to that? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution of City Commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, delegating authority to the city manager to submit a grant application in the amount of one million dollars to the Florida Inland Navigation District under their Waterway Assistance Program to renovate the Cooley's Landing Marina, delegating authority to the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary or incidental to the grant application, providing for an effective date. Commissioner, Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and R3 is now approved. R4, Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Appropriate City Officials to Execute a Comprehensive Agreement Among the City, Prospect Lake Water LP, Prospect Lake Holdings LP, and IDE PLCWC Inc., and a Labor Services Agreement between the city and PLCW, excuse me, PLCWC O and M LLC, for the development, construction, and operation of the Prospect Lake Clean Water Center Water Treatment Plant. I have a number of people have signed up to speak. I can give, is about fifteen people have signed up to speak, so I'll take questions and comments after public comment, does that make sense? Okay. And start with, so I'm going to name three people together, and so if you could sort of line up, so that saves a little time. Start with Marilyn Mamanu, followed by Ed Repholz, followed by Wayne Albert. Give you a couple minutes each.
Welcome, Ms. Mamanu.
Hello again, members of the commission, and mayor and members. My name is Marilyn Mamanu. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee, of which I am the chair. Before I meet my statement, I'd like to acknowledge the, in the audience, three other members of the committee, Roosevelt Waters, James Labrie, and Michael Lambex, our newest member. As you know, we've had two workshops with you just recently on the issue of the water treatment plant. The committee held a special meeting last week, and we held our regularly scheduled meetings yesterday, okay? And at that meeting, we had an intense discussion, and we voted eight to one to make the following recommendation to you. And the reason I'm reading it is, obviously, the minutes will not have reached you in time, so the committee authorized me to read this statement. A statement from the Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee to the City Commission, February 7. The Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee is in favor of proceeding with the current comprehensive agreement for the P3 for a new water treatment plant at the Prospect Lake site. In making this recommendation, the committee took into account the following reasons. In November of 2019, the committee communicated to the commission that if they were to go the P3 route for a new water treatment plant, three things should be considered. And I've included that communication in the documents, which I believe you already have. The three conditions were to keep control of the water, to keep control of the quality of the water, and to keep control of the water rate. In February twenty-two, the committee communicated to the commission that we believed that an RFP route was the better way to go for a new water treatment plant. However, also in February, the commission voted to go the P3 route and began negotiating a comprehensive agreement with the partner. In the next year, the committee worked with the city staff to review the comprehensive agreement with the original three recommendations in mind. The comprehensive agreement, which is the subject of tonight's meeting, does the following. One, control of the water remains with the city. The permit to draw the water, the associated wells and pumps are all in control of the city. The city is responsible for providing the operator with the amount of water we require at the current quality specified. Two, the quality of the finished water is detailed in the appendices of the agreement. Testing of the finished product is supervised by the city, and any deviation is penalized in the agreement. Continued failure to meet quality standards is a potential default. The total cost, and three, the total cost of providing the finished water to the city is set out in the agreement and fixed for a thirty-year period. In this way, the city is control, is in control of the impact of the new water treatment plant and, as, the impact of the new water treatment plant that will have on the rates. There may be other factors that impact the water rates, but the impact of the new water treatment plan is fixed and accounted for in the rate structure. And that is our statement to you. You all have copies, but I will leave some additional ones with the clerk, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Marilyn. I don't think we have any questions at this moment, but you're going to stay in the audience, right?
I will be here, yes.
Okay, great.
I do have a question, I'm sorry. Number three that you just read, if you could read it again for me.
Yes, I will. The total cost of providing the finished water to the city is set out in the agreement, the comprehensive agreement, and fixed for the thirty-year period. In this way, the city is in control of the impact the new water treatment plant will have on the rates. There may be other factors that impact the rates, but the impact of the new water treatment plant is fixed and accounted for in the rate structure.
So I believe that has been addressed in the comprehensive agreement.
We believe so, and we have said that that is one of the reasons for our recommendation.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Did she answer your question?
Yes, she did.
Okay, very good, thank you. Mr. Repholz.
Good, good. I'm Ed Repholz, I'm president of Lauderdale Harbors. And we have a concern with the, the new plant that we're looking at buying at three-quarters of a billion dollars. Little background, I managed large budgets and purchasing departments at a international company, and I find it peculiar that we're only dealing with one vendor at this point. It appears to me that if you have a scope and it changes, you should rebid it. I hear a little bit about, the scope has changed over the last two years. Key to getting an effective price is getting competitive bids and playing them against each other. Typical purchasing procedure. I even was on the FXC board for three, five years, and chair. Everything they bought was three, four bidders. And, and my training and my procedures I installed in a multinational company was to get the players to bid against each other. And I don't see that here. I'm a little concerned with that. I hear rush, 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 if we don't do it, it's forty-two months. Hey, guys, this is going to be with us for the next seventy, eighty years.
I hope so.
And I hope so too, because three-quarters of a billion dollars, I would think that's your biggest project you've ever had. Is that correct?
Actually, we did a, we did a, a waterworks project in the early two thousands that was about eight hundred million.
Okay.
This is about the same price, you know?
Yeah.
So this is a big, it's a big project, no matter how you look at it, no matter, you know? It's very important to the city, so we agree with you.
There's, there's another shorter question. I, I just, it's unusual for me to see one vendor here, and if the quote, if the, the scope has changed, then you go back to first step again. Yes, it's going to take a long time, but you're talking about a hell of a lot of money. Interest rates are high at this point. Where they will be in another two years, I don't know. There's going to be a savings there, big time. The other part of it, we get this plant up and rolling. We're pulling water, basically free water. It's coming out of the aquifer. We don't have to pay anybody for that water. Besides, your capital is, is built, water-free water. Why so much of an increase in rates? You know, the, if you operate this plant, the water's free, the cost that's a variable is maybe labor, and you can, you know, three, four percent a year. But we're raising, and that's a small part of this operation, I would think. My question is, why such an increase? What's feeding that? Where is all that increase going to?
So it's a very good question, and it's a very involved answer. I would invite you, we're not in a position to really respond right now, but if you'd like to speak with Mr. Dodd after the meeting, I'm sure he'll be able to provide you the information that got us to that point.
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you. Wayne Albert, followed by Ms. Miller Almodovar, and followed by Tom Quinn.
Commissioners, mayor, happy birthday. I'm a resident of the Lofts, and while I understand that we do need a new water treatment plant because...
Could you speak into the mic a little bit?
My water stinks, it's like gritty and everything. Anyway, my concern is walking out my front door and looking at it. None of the residents are happy with this plant going in because it's in view of many of our streets. I've been told that they're not going to take out any vegetation, but yet they've already cut down twenty-eight trees in the past month. They put a parking lot in about two years ago, and I believe I was corresponding with a Scott Wyman, who seemed unconcerned that they didn't hide this. They put up a few plants, but it's still very visible. I'm concerned with this big project they're going to put in and ruin the scenery outside my door. Not to mention all the houses on the end of the streets, because there's eight streets that all back up to this preserve. And all the end homes are going to be looking at this new plant going in, especially since there's property on the southwest end, backs up to a larger lake, which will probably be more suited for this plant to be put. I've been told that it's more in the way of the incoming aircraft. Now, I'm telling you, airplanes fly over my house every day. No matter where you put this plant, there are going to be airplanes flying over it. So really, I don't want to look at the plant, and that's my deal.
All right, thank you, sir. Where, where do you say you live?
Excuse me?
Where do you live?
In the Lofts of Palm Air.
Sixty-one thirty Northwest Thirty-Fourth Way.
Yeah, I mean, right there, I'm right onto that lake where they are backing up this plant.
Thank you. Is it Darlene Miller Almodovar?
Darlin.
What is it?
Darlin.
Darlin.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Darlin.
Thank you. Um, so I wanted to address the water plant issue because I also am a resident of one of the communities that is going to be in front of this potential issue. And I want to know, what is the driving force behind implementing now the water plant here as opposed to keeping the one that we have now in Fort Lauderdale?
Well, this isn't really like a question and answer time. I'd be happy to ask you to meet with Mr. Dodd after the meeting, and he can explain a lot of the, the answers that, that you have questions to that brought us to where we are tonight. Those questions are, were, are important, and the commission themselves asked those questions over the last three years as we were considering a new water plant. So if I can ask you, just to stay, the meeting will not be that long tonight. After we have this public hearing, there isn't much after this, and Mr. Dodd will be happy to answer those questions for you. All righty?
Okay. Well, I also wanted to just bring to the attention that I think that this is overall a proposal for a Band-Aid of the overall issue that we're having, because the piping system is really what it is, and if it comes down to the water purities that are an issue, that is something as simple as every single individual that would like water purity to be the resolution for the water that they drink to implement river, reverse osmosis in their own faucets and fountains. But if we're talking about the water that is used to fill our pools, wash our laundry, there really shouldn't be a need for such a six-hundred-and-sixty-six million dollar proposal of a filtration plant to be implanted in this situation, when the bigger picture here is the piping system that we have that has been causing several leaks and is the overall issue with the water itself.
Okay, so we are addressing that as well. This is not just a single item. While tonight we're just voting on a single item, we continue to work on our infrastructure when it concerns the pipes that run to and from the system. So, so for your, just so that you feel, you know, you have a more, a higher, better comfort level as to what we're doing, the city of Fort Lauderdale over the last several years is aggressively trying to work with its water and sewer systems underground. We have hundreds of miles, and we're working on that, each, each time we can address it. You'll hear a report in a future meeting about how we're trying to replace a lot of the old cast-iron pipes because of the infiltration and from rainwater and, and rising, and rising water from the, from underground, the aquifer, that's infiltrating our pipes and causing like more pressure on our wastewater treatment plant. So you'll hear more and more of that as, as we talk about it at our meetings, but tonight it's just a single item with regard to the water treatment plant. All right?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Mr. Quinn, followed by Mr. Tony Spalding, followed by Michael Ray. Good evening, Mr. Quinn.
Good evening. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for being public servants and for being here tonight. I'm in opposition to the water plant. I have several points, but the one I particularly want to make is, from what I heard on the phone conversations, the precipitate that you're going to filter out is going to be reinjected back into the ground. That does not seem to me to be a viable plan. What I heard by the phone, when you had the, when, when your staff had the meeting by phone, was, well, we're waiting to hear what Washington is going to tell us. Well, if you don't know what is the proper way to get rid of P3, and you're planning to spend four-hundred-and-fifty million for the city and two-hundred and some for the investor, why are you doing this? Secondly, I'm concerned about the participation of an investor. I heard on the phone conferences that I heard, that if this was not possible to have a, a partner, that it would take just an additional two years for the city to get this project done. Why are we getting involved with a partner? Two years in the lifespan of, what, sixty, eighty, ninety years of a, of a project are nothing. Two years in the lifespan of, what, 60, 80, 90 years of a, of a project are nothing. I really don't think that this is necessary to be done so quickly. I think it needs to be looked at more thoroughly. Thirdly, I'm going to just ask you to use your common sense in spending our money. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Tony Spalding, followed by Michael Ray, followed by Emily Feldman.
Good evening again.
You just signed up for this, right?
I did.
Okay.
A couple other people, yeah, my handwriting was a little clear there, so you can tell it's a four, not a two or a one or whatever, but I, a couple other people already hit up what I was going to hit, what I was going to speak about, so I just was going to say I don't need to really speak, I'll let somebody else with more intelligence.
Can you, can you, okay.
Sorry, I'm going to waive my time.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Spalding.
Sorry.
Michael Ray, followed by Emily Feldman, followed by Elizabeth Ross.
Good evening. My name is Michael Ray. I live in the Palmeir Lofts, one of eight dead-end streets that are block long and abut on the fence where this is all going to happen, within 700 feet of our houses. I'm asking you all to delay this vote on this project. There are too many fundamental questions yet unanswered. I would also ask that you consider refurbishing Five Ash. All this is about changing the color of water for over a billion dollars? Come on, fix the pipes first. What we need is a site, one, that's not near an airport runway. Do you know that there have been 20-some crashes in the last 20 years of planes at the Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport? Google it, look at Wikipedia, they have a list. We need a site that doesn't waste 7,500,000 gallons of water each day. What is the point of that? We need a site that doesn't store dangerous chemicals, one that doesn't raise water bills astronomically, one that's not 700 feet from our houses, which is going to drastically reduce our property values, not to mention the quality of life and the peace and enjoyment of our properties. We need one that doesn't destroy our property values, that doesn't create construction noise, dust, and pollution for 42 months. We have a plant already that can get, that can work at Five Ash. We need to see how it can be refurbished. Also, there's an issue here of due process notice. The people, especially at Palmeir, have largely been kept in the dark about what the city is doing on this project. I only learned about this workshop last week, two hours beforehand, from a neighbor across the street. Most of the people in our development who are most affected by this do not know what is going on. The city should have had people out there talking to us before our properties are destroyed and polluted, and we have to listen to this noise and put up with this for almost four years. It's just not right, it's premature, it's an unsolicited proposal. You need to stop and listen to the public and give us a due process opportunity of notice and the right to be heard. And this is not it tonight. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Emily Feldman, followed by Elizabeth Ross, followed by Monica Mitter.
Hi there. Sorry, this is my first time ever at one of these meetings.
Welcome.
Doing anything like this, so yay. So, thank you. So about three days ago, I received notice, I lives in, live in the Lofts of Palmeir. And three days, I've had to kind of research and, and look into all of these things. So I understand now, after reading over all of the information and the documentation, right, I understand a little bit about the basics behind this. I understand that Five Ash, Five Ash is probably going downhill and therefore needs to be refurbished. But there are questions within the documentation that I don't understand, that are not clear in any of, any of the information and the packets that were given. For instance, part of the documentation, it's noted that the Five Ash plant itself is going to be reused for other things. So part of the actual, the, the pipes themselves are going to be kept and reused as the main distribution center, and therefore all of the existing, or actually, the new water treatment plant that's being proposed will therefore ionize the water, go ahead and pump that water back into the Five Ash plant where it's redistributed along the same pipes, as long as I'm reading that clearly. So if they're going to go ahead and do that, while you guys are trying to refurbish these pipes and add new ones, then the PFACs that you're trying to go ahead and reduce the amount of will still be within the piping system itself, because it's still going to be in the pipes. Is that correct?
The pipe, the distribution system is also going to be rehabilitated.
Okay, so, but the pipes, right, they're, they're going to keep, continue, but that's going to take time within itself, right? So how long will it take for the pipes to be removed and the PFACs to actually be reduced at that point? So I guess my, my
So we understand your point.
Okay.
It's all part of this, it's all part of the project.
Okay.
It should all be completed within the timeframe that's contemplated by this project, 42 months.
42 months, so everything, including the pipe, the renovations, the, for Five Ash as well.
That's the expectation.
Okay, and then in regards to the plant itself and the surrounding area, right, the area itself, because there's so many residents within this area, this plant is supposed to be hidden behind the trees, right? That's, that's what the pictures have, have shown us. In the proposed plan, does, does the actual money that's proposed go into redoing all the plants and the, the infrastructure around it as well? Is that, is that in there?
Mr. Dodd? The landscape plan regarding this new site, is that, is that part of the budget that's been proposed tonight?
Mayor and Commissioner, as part of the permitting, if they have to remove any trees, then they will have to go through the tree removal process and then either replace the trees or come up with satisfactory accommodation in accordance with our city's ordinances.
Right, but if
The intent will be to only be removing them where the plant will be located, you know, immediately, and to keep the row of trees on the south side of the lake to provide a barrier between the homes and where the plant is located.
So there will be, there will be a landscaping barrier between the, the plant and, and the houses that are near it?
Yes, if you look at the picture on it, there's a row of trees that they're going to keep there. If they have to remove trees that need to be compensated for, that would be a natural place to put more trees in to help to make that barrier a little stronger.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am, you've used up your two minutes. Thank you. Elizabeth Ross, followed by Monica Mitter, followed by Mark Gelfon.
Good evening.
Hi.
I won't waste your time. I am just here as a resident of the Lofts of Palmeir Village, and I would like to express my dissatisfaction with the proposal. For all of the reasons mentioned, I agree with them totally. It's going to impact us as a community, our quality of life, our value of our property, and just the basic scenery that we've enjoyed. I've lived there for 30 years. We've avoided a homeless shelter being built on our property, and we fought that and we won, and hopefully we will win this one as well. I think I speak for everyone in the Lofts, but I'm just speculating on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We can produce
Are you Monica?
A petition of everybody, yes, Monica Mitter.
Okay.
Yes, we can produce a petition of all of the residents in the Lofts of Palmeir opposing this plant. We would like to request the upgrade of Five Ash rather than building this new plant on our doorstep. The effect of our property values is going to plummet.
When you say on your doorstep, how, what's the
700 feet.
700 feet, okay.
Yes, yes. Our, our property ends on the south end, right there by the fence, then the, your proposed site is just on the other side.
Okay.
It will be right outside our doors, our windows, everything. The impact to our neighborhood will be enormous.
Okay.
Five Ash can be renovated, I'm sure.
All right, thank you.
My name is Mark Gelfon.
Hello, Mark.
I'm also a resident of the Lofts, excuse me. You know, the three, four years worth of construction, the jackhammers, the dust, the traffic, the, besides everything that we've talked about, the feasibility of the project, three and a half years. We moved into the Lofts because it's a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood. It's quiet, peaceful, lots of shrubbery, lots of trees, and we, we already fought problems with the homeless shelter. We were right across the street from Executive Airport. We had, went through a system where some planes were rerouted because we had constant planes coming in 15 years ago. Two, three, four planes at two or three o'clock in the morning, right over our homes, rattling our windows. Where we live now is quiet, it's, it's a peaceful neighborhood. Many of us have our life savings invested in our two and three-bedroom townhomes. It's a beautiful, peaceful community, and we don't want to have our lives disrupted by it. Our property values will decrease. Some of us have most of our life savings invested in our homes, and a lot of us are I had my business for 30 years on Powerline and Prospect, right next door to the Five Ash plant. Had no problems with Five Ash. I had good friends who worked at Five Ash, some of my customers worked at Five Ash. Five Ash needs refurbishment, it was built in 1953. But five, from what I've read and what I understand, $175 million would refurbish Five Ash instead of spending $700 million on building a, a new wastewater, a new water plant, which I understand would, water was just going to be filtered and have to go back to Five Ash anyway.
Sir, where did you get that number, 175 million, to refurbish Five Ash?
In an article published just yesterday in the Fort Lauderdale News and Sun Sentinel.
Okay, was that from our city staff?
I'm sorry?
Was that from one of our consultants, from the city staff?
Mayor, I think that's a Rees report.
The Rees report?
I believe that's a Rees report.
Okay.
Now, I will say that's an old Rees report, so I think if we were to take that and bring those numbers forward, reflecting the same price increases that we've seen everywhere else, that would probably be in the neighborhood of 300 million, not 200 million. I mean, it reflects what we've seen in the police station, reflects what we've already seen with the existing one, so still a cheaper number, but, but I don't think it's the 175 any longer, that was a while ago.
It may not be 175, but it's considerably less than 700 million, and I suspect that that 700 million, like everything else, would probably be a whole lot more by the time it's done, just like the $800 million bond issue was a whole lot more, and it still isn't done for the schools.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Ma'am, I have a question, and I
Thank you, thank you, all three.
No, I want to ask, I want to
Oh, you want to ask Mr. Gelfon?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And, and I am concerned about what you're saying, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, but when I see a neighborhood come and I, and I hear everything you're saying, and I, and I understand your frustration, I always have to ask myself, because this is a little bit late in the game, and the commission has been having a discussion about a water treatment plant, what, for over three years now? So has it been more than three?
The proposal was accepted in 2020 or received in 2020.
So about three years when we accepted the proposal. So my question is, do you get the city information? Do you attend your District One Commission meetings with the commissioner? Do you understand, or are you informed in their newsletters what's happening? In other words, I'm trying to figure out the disconnect.
It's only been the last two weeks we've even heard about it.
So you've never heard anything from the city or your district commissioners?
Looking for the city, no.
Nothing?
We have not been notified about this whatsoever.
And you never attended any meetings with the district commissioners, or the district commissioners never came to your neighborhood and explained the proposal over the last three years?
No.
Nobody ever came to our association meeting, or our annual meeting happens to be tonight as it is. Otherwise, we'd have a lot more people here.
Because I'm just trying to figure out the gap. There's a gap here.
There is a serious gap.
There's a communication gap.
Zero communication.
Okay, thank you.
We're blindsided by this.
Thank you.
So, to echo along with that, I think Commissioner Glassman brings up a very good point. So my predecessors, before I got here, I, I've been here in the seat since December, so I'm kind of new to this. I had the opportunity to get out and walk your neighborhood during the election. This was an, something that came up during the discussions, but obviously I couldn't meet with everybody, knocked on a lot of doors, may not have gotten to yours. But I think the point that Commissioner Glassman brings up is a really important one. So we've been talking about this in our meetings. So before every one of the district, before every one of the commission meetings on the Monday prior, we have an open call, and we go over every item that's on the agenda, and we also talk about things that are of interest to, throughout the city, as well as specific to our district. So I would encourage you all, please, please, sign up, go to the website, you'll see our link on there, sign up so that you are informed about everything that's taking place in the district. I'm going out and I'm getting to every single HOA in the district. I'm trying to get to every meeting of every HOA association. Obviously, I can't make yours tonight, so please don't schedule them on commission meeting nights. If you schedule them on other nights, I promise you I'll be there. But it's imperative, and this goes to everybody that's listening, if you don't sign up for the individual commissioners' briefings, it's going to be very hard to find out what's going on. There's only two ways that we can communicate with you, and that's through your HOA association, and they know, because we communicate with the HOAs, and attending these regular meetings every two weeks. If you just, if you dial into these, you'll hear a regular discussion from me on every single issue that impacts both our district and the city as a whole. So please avail yourself of that.
We welcome that.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Yeah, as much participation as we can get. Our goal is to be as transparent as possible. As Commissioner Glassman says, we've been talking about this for, for quite a few years now, but I understand not everybody hears that message, because not everybody is engaged in city business. We are, because this is what we live in, but everybody else is busy living their life, and so they may not be privy to what we're, what we're doing. So I encourage you again, please sign up for our, for our email and our mailing list and our newsletter and those Zoom meetings. Thank you.
Yeah, we are in your district, Mr. Herbst.
Yes, you're District One.
Yes, sir, you are.
We are in your district, Mr. Herbst, and we would, we'd very much like to have you come out to, to the Lofts, discuss with our residents.
Absolutely, I've, as I said, I had the opportunity to get out and walk Palmeir Village and, and, and experience the neighborhood, and I agree with you, it's a beautiful neighborhood out there, and we want to impact it to the lowest extent possible in a negative way. But again, participation is key. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to mention to please consider, instead of ruining our properties, to possibly consider another location for this, maybe an industrial area, not near Palmeir.
Okay, thank you.
If I could say something, what this neighborhood is saying about, in a sense, what they consider to be lack of communication, I think we as a commission and the city need to take note, because this is not unique to this one community. We hear this often, that the information is not being received, not saying that it's not being disseminated, but we need to figure out what that gap is and make sure that the city is 100% informed of what's going on, because that is an issue in District Three as well, and now we know it's an issue in District One, and I'm sure if we ask some other residents, neighbors, we will find that they are not receiving the information. I often say everyone does not have broadband or internet service, everyone doesn't read the information on the back of their water bill, if that's even still being done. So we need to figure out how to close this gap, because it is a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last three people, Neil Colner, Boyd Corbin, and Wendy Liederman. Is Neil here? Oh, there he is, yep. Yep.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. Neil Colner, I live in the Lofts of Palmeir Village, and I speak in vigorous opposition to this ill-conceived R4, for many reasons. These questions are not answered in all those hundreds and hundreds of pages attached to the agenda. Why has the city allowed an unsolicited suitor to choose what type of design and where to put this plant? Why don't you, as the city, now set your own standards and cite the new plant at the eleven and a half acre Five Ash? Two, has the city explored the feasibility of desalination technology and compared the cost? It is getting cheaper. In fact, one of the project team members here has put them in Dubai and Israel. Third, why plop this plant at the Prospect Well Field rather than a Five Ash? Perhaps save the extra hundred and eighty-one million dollars, quote, "project enabling works." The pipes from the reservoir for the new shiny new plant to Five Ash are going to cost a hundred and eighty-one million dollars. That's over the four hundred and eighty-five. Now, how many million gallons of which chemicals are going to be stored on the site? Are they explosive, flammable, toxic? If these unanswered questions are not enough, looks like this project may disturb federal wetlands. Look at page one fifty-nine of Exhibit Four. Three more reasons. One, the city taxpayers are on the hook to pay at least one point two billion dollars, with a B, in higher taxes and water fees. Two, we do not need a PhD in chemistry to know the promised crystal clear water will never come out of sixty-year-old rusty corroded pipes. Three, recent serious threats by domestic terrorists on infrastructure like this plant counsels against putting such vital municipal projects in a busy airport flight path or the FPNL power substation. Please, the decision will affect the city for a century. We've waited this long, let's not, as some have suggested, pull the trigger! Before we know what we're stuck with, rushing now will not compensate for past neglect and mismanagement of our water infrastructure. Please deny this resolution.
Boyd Corbin, followed by Wendy Liederman.
The one point four billion dollar P3, which includes financing fees, will not buy a new water treatment plant. It will only buy a big nanofiltration water filter, which is only worth three hundred million dollars, and it'll be built four miles away from Five Ash. It will waste eight million gallons per day of water that we might need within thirty years, every day. Electricity costs to run it would be astronomical, which the city will pay. Thirty years ago, Dr. Reese did a pilot study and said we should use ozone and carbon to filter out our green and yellow water. It was never done. Five years ago, Reese Engineering said we should do another pilot test with ozone and carbon to confirm it will meet the city's goal of getting our water under eight color units. A year and a half ago, Reese Engineering did a pilot study, and they verified ozone and carbon will still be the best way to get clear water with six color units, which is crystal clear, and two color units below the city's goal. It won't waste water. I saw an email from Ed Dalton a month ago. He wrote the Reese Report and the Reese Pilot Study, and he said the current cost for ozone and carbon and refurbishing Five Ash is two hundred fifty million dollars, and twelve point seven million per year. That's a bargain compared to nanofiltration. That will save one point two billion dollars. We could have clean, clear water within two years without needing to add ammonia to pass EPA safe water testing. Trust me, ammonia is bad. The pilot testing has already been done. We could send it out for RFP right away. So, what happened? Omar, the city engineer, says carbon isn't good at removing PFAS. In fact, carbon is the best at that. The mayor says Five Ash can't withstand a category five hurricane. It's built like a fortress and can easily be upgraded, but the proposed P3 will use the Five Ash plant anyway. A year ago, Hazen and Sawyer engineers entered the picture as the city's engineering consultant. Now, get this. Now, they say the city's goal for water clarity is under five units, so ozone won't work. This is ridiculous.
All right, please conclude your comments.
The P3 will use fifty-six million gallons per day when finished, which is more than the fifty-three million gallons per day we are permitted for. And it assumes getting two deep well injection permits, which are hard to get. Don't be lazy. Take some time to understand water treatment, which you currently don't understand. Otherwise, everybody's water bill will go up five hundred dollars per year. That's the best case scenario, and there won't be enough money to fix our failing city water and sewer pipes. This is a billion-dollar ripoff, which we will still get green and yellow water due to old city pipes. And a for-profit company will make decisions on water quality and amounts of water wasted depending on dollar amounts.
Thank you so much.
Do you, do you have any comments? I mean, I've been talking about this for five years, guys. Warren, you don't know the first thing about this stuff.
Your time is concluded.
Do you, do you have any comments about any of this stuff? One point two billion dollars, Dean.
We have been commenting on this for the last four years.
Yeah.
Participating in those comments.
I know.
And, and for some reason, we still have a difference of opinion, and you're entitled to your opinion. Now, please sit down. Wendy Liederman?
The engineers have their own opinion.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? I have, uh, I have, uh, the folks from, uh, from IDE and Ridgewood, they've all signed up, but that's just to respond to questions, right? Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. City Manager will, will wrap this up. Wendy?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Thanks to all the speakers that have come here in opposition, I haven't heard anybody that's been for it. I've, I've, thanks to Boyd, uh-
Wait, wait, can you speak into the mic a little bit better?
Yeah, just want to thank everybody that's been here in opposition, I haven't heard anybody that's been for it. I've been following it for three years, thanks to Boyd blowing the whistle during the sewage crisis that happened three years ago. And, um, yeah, I, I have people writing all the time, because we've been sharing this information, they're afraid that they're not going to be able to keep their water on, and they're going to lose their home, because they're not going to be able to keep it up to code. There's people that can't afford water filtration in their homes because of all the chemicals that are used in the water that need to actually be burned off twice a year for six weeks out of the year, and you don't test for those halogens, which I'm sure as an M.D., you're aware of what that can do to the human body and immune compromised people. I mean, this is like, how could you even put a price on this and to not explore other options? And the, um, infrastructure package, there's just recently been all kinds of grants and loans that have been released. Have, have, I'm just wondering if the new commissioners have actually read the contract, or are they just going on what they're being told? Have you seen that there's indemnity clauses that, um, show that the project company can't be held liable, that, um, water quality standards don't have to meet legal standards, they just have to meet the standards of the contract? And there's, there's no recourse for anybody? And this is for thirty years? Like, how could you sign away our vital resources? People that don't even have a voice, children that have to drink this water and bathe in it, they don't even know. I've spoken to vice mayors, state representatives, county commissioners, they didn't know. That, that is neglect on your part, on the press, all right? Um, we, I'm just wondering if you've actually read the contract, because if you haven't, then you need to do your due diligence. Nobody is for this. This is a vital resource. And, and, um, everybody was talking about the environmental studies. In the contract, the, in the ecological studies that were done, were done in May of last year, they were only valid for ninety days. In the, um, the, the town halls, we were told that the rate caps, the monthly rate caps would be capped at a hundred and forty percent, which is already insanely high. That's impossible, because we have to pay the electricity, the feedwater, the insurance, the diesel, the chemicals, the, these chemicals that shouldn't, we shouldn't even be using these, we could be doing carbon filtration and ozone. And, and then we're going to put four miles of pipes in when we have my, like you said, hundreds of miles of crumbling ancient infrastructure that is going to react with these chemicals, and we're still going to have dirty, nasty, toxic water when it comes out of the pipes, and people will have no recourse. And they're, like, what are, what are they going to do? This is for real. You guys can't just jump right into this, when how many people have already gotten sick and have no correlation, because they don't understand the chemicals that are in their water?
All right, thank you so much. Again, is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? If not, um, I'd like to, um, ask for a motion to close public hearing. Is there a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman. Vice Mayor Sterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I'd like to say a few words, but prior to saying those words, this is a summary of all the efforts of staff over the past two years of evaluating this proposal. Before I say those words, I'd like to show this video, which summarizes the current condition of the water treatment plant. IT, can you turn it up?
Fort Lauderdale has been working for decades. Parts of the facility, however, from the fifties and sixties, need work. The, the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant in Fort Lauderdale has been working for decades. Parts of the facility, however, from the fifties and sixties, need work. The question is, how or what should be done?
On a typical day, we will produce about thirty-five million gallons of water. We can peak around mid-forties, depending on the time of year and the time of season.
Colin Leslie, the process control engineer at Five Ash, took us on a walkthrough of the plant, built in the nineteen fifties. The water, treated and disinfected here using a gravity and lime softening system, goes to about two hundred fifty thousand customers within Fort Lauderdale and neighboring cities. Five Ash is functional, but what's undeniable is the deterioration of a building that is seventy years old.
There are challenges with this facility due to the age of some of the components. Sometimes things aren't available, and our mechanics and our maintenance supervisor, our electricians are very good at thinking their way around a problem or finding a different solution to problems that we have.
After months of research and commission workshops, city officials held two virtual town halls in January for the public to learn more about a proposed public-private partnership for a new water treatment plant.
In two thousand nineteen, Corolo, one of the city's consultants, engineering consultants, issued a detailed study. Additionally, they confirmed Reese's opinion that Five Ash was at the end of its useful life, and Corolo recommended construction of a new water treatment plant to replace Five Ash treatment.
Would provide numerous benefits to our neighbors, including the latest water treatment technology, producing clear water without a yellow tinge, along with the infrastructure to withstand a category five hurricane. Definitely so much for our neighbors and the commission to consider as they look to make a decision in the coming days. You can find more on the water treatment plant and these big decisions by the link in our caption. I'm Arlene Bornstein, and we are FTL.
So, Mr. Mayor, as you can see from the video, the water treatment plant has served this community very well for the past seventy years. However, its aging condition is something that needs to be addressed promptly. There's several concerns, including the water color, the emerging contaminants, which we've heard about today from the public. And this brings us to a point where the commission must decide on the best way to meet the water quality needs for the community and long term. So, the decision today that's before you is one that is focusing on human health and economic perspective, and the city has gone through an exhaustive process to arrive to this point, again, over two years. And the city has, um, looked at recommendations of experts that have weighed in on how the plant should be constructed and what elements it should have. So, the decision to construct these facilities can be broken down into three separate, separate areas. For instance, number one, how to implement construction, whether it's P3 or other methods. Number two, what commercial terms are, costs and responsibilities. And three, what technology to use and whether to retain parts of the existing plant. With regard to the third issue, I want to remind the commission that modifying Five Ash in any way, in the brittle condition that it's in, and to meet the city's water goals, is going to require a state permit, and that permit must require, or requires a design permit, or a design with a registered professional engineer, and the engineer must space his or her recommendations on documented, specific and scientific engineering studies and analysis. What that means is that additional work for studies must be done just to reconstruct or rehab the existing Five Ash. Again, more time. So, we've commissioned many studies from national engineering firms, some of you, some of you have learned that from Hazen and Sawyer, which are, are representatives as a third party. And staff has performed extensive outreach over the past month. Just to give you an idea, we did a call out to twenty-three thousand phone numbers within the city of Fort Lauderdale, and of those twenty-three thousand, nineteen thousand people picked up, and of that, after five minutes, five thousand people stayed on to listen in to the telephone town hall. And so, we want to, we want to let you know that if we do look at rehabbing, that will require a alternative technological approach, which may delay the ability to sustain the existing infrastructure that we have in place today with Five Ash. So, again, the commission can decide to abandon the prior studies and search for solutions, which may rehabilitate the existing Five Ash plant. However, studies since the nineteen nineties show that this is not something that will have high probability of success. And so, again, for the past two years, we've worked through procurement methods and guidance from the city attorney's office, and additional exploration of other alternatives will require additional time. So, with that said, our staff, consultants, and proposers are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. I just want to say one thing. There was a question as why we don't explore desalination. We did explore desalination. Unfortunately, there are two components to desalination, which the city of Fort Lauderdale does not possess. One is in a waterfront, ocean side, uh, site that we can build a desalination plan, and two, we would need a dedicated, uh, power source, a dedicated, um, power plant, again, which the city doesn't have. The county has those, however, and we have been, um, speaking with the county representatives about their, uh, creating a desalination plant at the port. So, the port is actually a perfect location for such a plant. So, um, we feel that that's also very forward-thinking. Unfortunately, the city of Fort Lauderdale doesn't have the capacity to accommodate that kind of, uh, technology. So, um, uh, so, so now I'd like to ask the members of the city commission, Mr., we'll start with District One. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I'm not telling anybody anything that they don't already know. This is an extremely complex and nuanced decision. I have been following this for many years, back when I was a city auditor and we first began down this path with the initial two unsolicited proposals that we received from Suez and IDE, which we rejected. That's how we got to the second round of unsolicited proposals. At a point in time, we were also moving down a parallel path to have our own RFP. At some point, that initiative was terminated by the city manager, don't quite know why. I think that would have been useful, because it would have given us a few more options at this point. I think we, you know, perhaps missed the boat on that. I think that may have been a strategic mistake because we're now in a position where, we're several years down the road, we've seen cost increases that are fairly dramatic, and to go back and start from scratch now is certainly going to be time-consuming and potentially expensive process. You know, we have to develop a new design package. We've got to go out to RFP to do design and engineering before we can even go out to bid for construction, to do a design build or design bid build. So all that weighs kind of heavily on my mind. I've had an opportunity to talk with Boyd extensively, look at the material he sent me. I've learned more about deep well injections than I ever wanted to know. I know all the ins and outs now of lime softening and granular activated carbon and ozone and ion exchange and everything else that goes along with it. So my skill set is finance, it's not engineering. I struggle with this because we've got engineers on both sides of the equation that are recommending different technologies, as well as the ability to fit the plant within our existing footprint at Five Ash versus doing a greenfield up at Prospect Lake. All my family is in construction. They'll tell you it's always easier to do a greenfield project than it is to do a renovation of an existing facility. They'd much rather do that. The cost differential is always something that is of paramount importance to me. Again, I know the early studies, as was mentioned earlier, suggested that the cost of rehabbing at Five Ash would be in the $170 million range. I don't think that's an accurate figure anymore. Again, compared to what we've seen across the board in some of the other areas, I think that number is probably higher. And I know in talking with Alan Dodd and Omar, there are certain enabling works that also need to be built at Five Ash. So it's not as if we can avoid all of that enabling works, construction that we have to do up at Prospect. What the scope of that may be, it's certainly not going to be in the 150 to 180 million dollar range. You know, would it be 100 million? I don't know. Again, not an engineer, couldn't tell you. So I struggle with this one. I've been struggling with this a lot, talking with a lot of folks, trying to get as much information as I can, and it's a difficult decision. I'm not sure where I am at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions because I'm still not in a comfortable place with the direction I would like to go.
Speak to Greg or Mr. Dodd. Mr. Dodd, why don't you come up and perhaps you can...
Okay.
I'll be right back.
Okay. My concerns, of course, is the method of the security of our water plant. What is the plan that is going to secure and avoid terrorism? I keep hearing this every, every conversation, every opportunity that we have an open hearing, a public hearing, those concerns are brought forward. And if you could explain what we have in place now versus what will be offered going forward?
Yes, Commissioner. So at Five Ash right now, we have, the water treatment plant is inside a controlled fence line. So in order to get into it, you have to have access with a city badge and be, and not only be a city employee, but be authorized to go into the water plant. It has an extensive number of security cameras, so that if anybody is trying to enter at any time, we will know right away. It's manned 24/7. As far as the operation of the plant, we are very, very concerned about cyber threats to it. So we have a SCADA system that basically isolates the plant from the internet. So it cannot be hacked from the outside. In order to, to affect the control systems, it would have to be done, some would have to get through the fence line into the plant through locked doors and into a second set of locked doors to where the servers and the control rooms are that is manned and physically change the computers that are in there. It cannot be done from the outside. And within those, even for the employees who do have access, they do not have permission to go in and change a program. There's a very few number of people who are actually authorized to change the hard coding within the systems itself. So even the operators cannot change that to endanger public health. So those are some of the things, of course, that falls under critical infrastructure laws set by the federal government, and there's a lot of, a lot of other aspects to go along with it to provide the security. The new plant will have a lot of those same features. It will have upgraded, more enhanced security cameras and other features. It will have the same type perimeter fence, the same type of SCADA systems, but probably to a more modern level, since it's a brand-new facility, it'll be built to the state-of-the-art requirements that are going through the design.
Okay. One of the neighbors indicated for the new site being close to the airport, possibility of terrorism in that manner, assuming what I gathered from the conversation, an attack from the air to disable our water system. What can we do to prevent that?
Well, Commissioner, the Five Ash has the same vulnerability where something from, from the air could obviously get to it. A plane or something could go there. In this site, as part of the sighting, they looked at the FAA requirements for where the flight path was, and they did offset the plant so that it's not within the immediate flight path on it. And that was part of the reason why it had to be a little further north on the site, because if we went further south, it would actually get closer to the flight path. And there's been coordination with the FAA as far as permitting requirements, and of course, they will have to approve as far as their permits, where the plant is located and the height on it, to protect it from any type of planes or incidents that could impact airport operations or create a risk to our plant.
Regarding the quality of the water, I keep hearing about the continuous use of the same pipes, not, you know, putting in new pipes. We're going to get the same results. Could you address that?
Yes, Commissioner. So as part of the design of the plant, we will have to, as one of the permits from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, we will have to commission an optimal corrosion control plan, a study, to look at what chemicals are necessary to be introduced into the plant in order to protect the pipes, as the water's going through. That includes disinfectants and other things, but to make sure that the water that's coming out at the tap meets all federal and city requirements. Now, in order to, somebody raised a point about how some requirements may cause it to be higher than the federal standard. And the reason for that is because we have to look at what's the chemicals in the water at the tap. And so some things like the chloramines, and it may have to be slightly higher when it's coming out of the plant because it's going to pass through the pipes into the water tanks, and those chemicals will degrade as they're passing through. We do testing at the end of the distribution system at, at the taps at houses, and then we adjust the chemicals at the plant in order to make sure that we're complying with those federal and city requirements.
What about the distribution pipes? I think that was part of the question.
Well, that's part of, the study is determining exactly what we have to do to process the water to protect the pipes as they're going through.
No, not just to protect the pipes, but the, there's a, there's a suggestion that the existing pipe system is old and corrosive. Is this plan inclusive of a replacement of the, any of the distribution lines?
Yeah, it's, Mayor, the, the plan itself is separate from that. As part of our overall CIP program, we do replace pipes. And in the past five years, since 2017 to '23, we spent about $35 million replacing old pipes and upgrading them. We have approximately $54 million that is in the current CIP from '23 through FY '27 to continue replacing pipes.
Okay.
The pipes, I'm not a construction person, I don't understand some of this, but will the pipes be replaced before we do everything else? Because what I'm hearing, it sounds like we're going to put up the new water plant, and then we're going to go back and put the plants, the pipes in. So is that not defeating the purpose?
Commissioner, the pipes that we have in the ground are transmitting the water. However, the water that we are putting into it doesn't meet the color standards, it does not protect us from emerging contaminants like PFAS. So a new plant will enable us to provide better water than we're able to produce right now. It will pass through the same pipes from the distribution center at Five Ash. We'll still be using the distribution portion of that facility and going through pipes. If you go to Peel Dixie, which is our nanofiltration plant on the south side of the city, we do not get complaints about quality of water going through there because it is nanofiltration. It's passing through the same pipe distribution system that we have in the rest of the city, but because we've improved the plant on the south side, we're not getting those same type of complaints that we do from residents who live on the north sides where they're getting water from Five Ash.
And also, he said, the CIP plan calls for pipe replacement between 2023 and 2027, which is the same timeframe as it would take to build the plant. So it'll all be happening simultaneously, as I understand it.
Yes, Mayor, and the, the plant is separate from the distribution projects that we do have planned.
Okay, I have no other questions. Thank you. I'm done.
Have you concluded your comment?
Yes, I'm concluded.
Okay, Commissioner Glassman, do you have any comments?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So we've read so much over the last several years. I've read every word, I've spoken to everyone, both the closed-door sessions that we had when this first came our way, listened to our consultants who analyzed all of the proposals at the time. I know that someone said, why are we just, I think Mr. Rebols wanted to know why we're just working with one vendor, but that's because we went through a selection process, and then it's up to us to negotiate and continue that work with that vendor once we selected them. I also have heard from all of our staff, and I appreciate all of that input over the years. And I also have heard from our Infrastructure Task Force, which is our advisory board, that we've tasked with analyzing issues like this. And then tonight, we heard that final report of them voting just one person opposed to supporting us moving forward. So that's good for me. I, all of my questions over the last several years have been answered, and I feel very confident in moving forward. And I wanted to also thank our Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Board for all of their work and their due diligence, and staff as well, all of our vendors that we've had the expertise along the way. And I'm going to put my faith in that expertise, and I'm going to put my faith in what I'm hearing from our advisory board, and I am ready to move forward, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Alan, I'm going to ask you a bunch of questions. We've gone through this before, and I know we've, know the answer to this, Infrastructure Task Force is well aware, and I'm not, no, no hardballs. We've discussed this several times, and just more for clarity, okay? Number one, is it correct that Five Ash pumps roughly 35 million gallons a day and Peel Dixie about 15? Is that about ballpark, correct?
No, Five Ash is about 35 million gallons per day. Peel Dixie is about, it's about 6 million gallons per day, although it has the ability, capacity to do up to between nine and 12, depending on what we're doing for maintenance.
What year did we replace Peel Dixie?
Okay. 2007, 2008.
Couple of questions. How old was Peel Dixie when we replaced it?
It was...
71 years old, is that not correct? Okay. What condition was it in when we replaced it?
Yeah, yeah. If you want, Vice Mayor, I'll have, George?
But you could both stay up there, you could both stay up there.
Yeah. Hazen Sawyer was very involved in that project, so they can talk a lot more about history.
Sure, but stay kind of close, okay?
George with Hazen and Sawyer. Thank you. The Peel Dixie plant was at the end of its useful life at the time of its replacement.
How old was that plant designed to last?
It's designed to last about 75 to 80 years.
Seven, okay. Okay, so during that time when they rebuilt Peel Dixie, what did, I mean, we know the answer to this, but just for the benefit of the people in the audience, what did we do with, when we had to shut that down? I mean, Five Ash took over the function for the whole city while we, while we were building Peel Dixie, is that correct?
What happened, the existing Peel Dixie lime softening plant remained in operation while the new nanofiltration treatment plant was constructed. The nanofiltration plant was, went through its startup and received all the necessary permits to begin sending water into the distribution system. And then the operations staff from the city transitioned to operating Peel Dixie Nanofiltration Plant, and then turned off the lime softening plant. Simply just turned it off and mothballed the lime softening infrastructure.
How much could Five Ash pump right now if, if had to be? How much, what was the capacity?
The pumping capacity, I think, is about 80 million gallons per day.
So during the construction of Peel Dixie, if need be, Five Ash could have taken over?
Yes.
How old is Five Ash? It's 71 years old too, is that correct?
It's about 70 years old, 69, 70.
What is the lifespan of that plant?
Same as Peel Dixie, about 70 to 80 years.
If, I mean, again, we know the answer. If we had to go ahead and rebuild at Five Ash, is it an option for, again, it's the obvious answer to this question, is it an option for Peel Dixie to pump water throughout the city if we had to close Five Ash to rebuild it that site?
The Peel Dixie plant does not have sufficient capacity to turn Five Ash off and produce all of the city's water demand through the Peel Dixie plant.
Now for Alan, do we have room on, we've gone through this before, do we have room at Five, don't go too far. Do we have room at Five Ash to build a plant there, a new plant while Five Ash is running? Is there room at Five Ash to have Five Ash running?
Vice Mayor, we do not. The current plant is around nine acres, and if we were to remove the admin building, if we were to remove all of the parking areas where all of our utility crews park vehicles and operate, and the fuel area, that only provides us about seven acres of space.
Okay. The currently, water from the well is being pumped from the well to Five Ash to get, to be processed, correct?
That is correct.
Putting the well, putting the treatment plant at Five Ash, it's the same, you're still going to have to, either way, you're still going to have to pump water from Prospect to the Five Ash for distribution, regardless of where it's located.
That is correct.
Okay. And is there, is there, at this age, we're starting to put more and more money into replacing and repairing Five Ash maintenance, correct?
Yes.
Mr. City Manager, you want to describe what we saw the day that we were at, that we toured, we toured Peel Dixie as well as we toured Five Ash? Do you remember that day?
Yes, so we obviously saw things like the video, and at the end of our tour, we experienced water gushing out of a pipe, out of, looked like a, probably like, maybe a 24-inch pipe. And gentleman said, don't worry, that, that happens a lot, so let me just put the backup one. He turned off that one, he turned on the backup one, and the back one, the backup one started gushing water as well. So those are the conditions that they are operating under, and so prompt decision is warranted.
I was shocked. I mean, I was, I mean, a pump failure. What was even more shocking was the staff's reaction of, oh, yeah, it happens every day. Water is, is, is not electricity, it's not roads, it's not internet. If Five Ash has a major failure, I mean, I know it's not likely, but it's a possibility, we can't wait three, four years and Five Ash fails and start building a new plant. The cost of delay, I don't know if Susan wants to talk about what the cost would be, delaying the plant, but that would be, you know, you wait two years for another plant to come online, no, the differential is not that great, but two years from now, the price is not going to go down. Coming into office, I had a big problem with the P3. I had an issue with, you know, adding a middleman. I thought that we should do it ourselves. You're sharing the risk when you have a third party there. The city is ultimately responsible for the risk either way, and I was not in favor of the P3. I've spoken to Infrastructure Task Force with an eight-to-one vote. Like me, they had a problem with the P3. Their issues were swayed by, I mean, there's a cost to delay, there's a cost to go forward. Something as critical as water, you know, you might get it cheaper, but in the time if we had a major failure with our water supply, that would be absolutely devastating to this community. At this particular point, I think that we had an Infrastructure Task Force who's done an exhaustive job, and their recommendation, I think, we should heed. That's my thought at this point. Guys, thank you very much for your help. Guys, thank you very much for your help.
Does that conclude your comments, Vice Mayor?
Yes, it does.
Does anyone else have any comments to make? Okay, I just wanted to say that I appreciate staff for all the work that you've done over these last several years in bringing this moment forward. I know that we have spent many hours together trying to come up with a solution. I'm very concerned about any further delay in making any decisions. We've seen what delays in the past have done to our infrastructure and how this community has suffered as a result, and I don't want this community to suffer anything further. So I would ask for someone to introduce the resolution regarding R4. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Some moved.
All right, it's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute a comprehensive agreement among the city, Prospect Lake Water LP, Prospect Lake Holdings LP, and IDE PLCWC Inc., and a labor service agreement between the city and PLCWC O&amp;M LLC in connection with the design, construction, operation, and maintenance of the Prospect Lake Clean Water Center of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing for repeal of inconsistent provisions and providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
No.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
No.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the resolution is now approved. Thank you. OFR1, first reading, ordinance ratifying and approving the transfer of the Lauderdale Isle Water Management District into the City of Fort Lauderdale and providing for the modification of the district's charter and boundary. Mr. Spalding, are you still here? Mr. Spalding? There you are. Did you sign up for this?
I did.
You want to speak on it? Okay.
So I was unaware of this resolution until recently, and I had a couple of questions about it, and I was talking to some of the residents, you know, about it, and nobody that I spoke to was aware of it. And just the two main points was, none of the people I spoke to was aware of it, and the other point was that if we extend the boundary, this is as far as I've gotten into this document, because there's a whole lot there to try and read in just one day, if we extend about the, I used to serve on Lauderdale Isles Water Management from like 1992 to 2003 or something like that. The New River was not part of our purview because it's a free, it's a free-flowing water. We were just aquatic weed control, and our residents were taxed a special assessment to try and combat just the weed control in our canals, which don't free flow as much as the New River. If we extend that down to the south bank, that makes Lauderdale Isles residents responsible for the cost of maintaining the New River, which is not, you know, the boundaries of the New River, I think, belong to Davie now, since they bought Hossie into Village, and possibly even Dana, I'm not sure how far it goes over because I haven't read in there if it goes past 31st or not. But there's nobody to tax for the south side of the New River, as we are taxed for our canals. So that, just the fact that the residents don't know, and we don't, the ones that I spoke to don't want to carry the burden of having to maintain that section of the New River.
So are you in favor of the ordinance, or you're, I'm not quite sure what you're saying. Are you in favor of the ordinance or against the ordinance?
I guess I'm leaning against it, but I don't know enough about it to say I'm totally against it. I would like to, you know, find out how more the residents feel as well. The ones that I spoke to didn't know anything about it, but I'm sure when they come to find out that we might be responsible, say, for instance.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Interim City Attorney Dwayne Spence. The gentleman is actually speaking about the inverse of what this ordinance is doing. Currently, when the district was transferred while it was in unincorporated Broward to the City of Fort Lauderdale, after we annexed the area, they transferred the boundary, including the south bank of the New River. This ordinance corrects that boundary and will move the boundary to the center of the river rather than the south bank.
And that's all that this does?
Correct, and also adopts the charter, changing the charter that was previously referencing Broward County to now reference the city.
For Lauderdale, okay.
There was a lot of reading in there, and I couldn't understand why the river was part of it all.
Understand, it's a big document.
Because we were the county, the river had, you know, it ended at the end of our, you know, at the end of our docks.
Unfortunately, it was the other way around. It currently goes to the south boundary when it was in the county.
So we're not going to be responsible for all the stuff?
This does the opposite of what you thought it was going to.
All right. I hadn't gleaned that from reading it, but I was working hard on getting there and talking to some people today, so I was hoping is that we could delay the, this vote until we could find out more about it and the effects. And there's an awful lot of underlying wording in there, which means this has changed as to what the original water management, you know, our weed, aquatic weed control was supposed to do. Like, there's new, I'm reading verbiage about grants and, I've forgotten all the stuff that's in there. But it was just a whole lot to read on and, Warren, I know you sit as a third member now, the fact that I spoke to over 50 people today and not one of them knew what this was.
Can I just make a comment here? Mr. Dwayne, this is really a cleanup item. I mean, this one, one from many years ago, and this is the thing that used to be Broward County, now that we incorporated it into our city.
That's correct, so the Lauderdale Isle.
And this is really cleaning this up, you know, the language and all the terms that used to be referencing the county, now that the city has incorporated that area, we just have to clean the language up to make it city-appropriate.
So this was initiated by the Lauderdale Isles Water Management District Board, and it was initiated because of the concern raised by the resident, because they discovered that the southern boundary of the district was actually in the town of Davie and on the south bank of the river. So it was initiated to correct that and address those concerns and remove it. So it's been to the Lauderdale Isles Water Management District Board for a number of years now, as we discussed and looked at the different revisions. This is the exact charter language that presently exists now, and the special act that was adopted, it's just modified to recognize the city and the new boundaries.
All right, I was looking at our old charter from Broward County, which I still have, and I'm trying to compare it, and I'm not seeing.
It should be identical language.
It's totally different from what I have, but.
Okay, so let's, so now that you understand it, let's, let us move on then, okay? You've used your two minutes. Now that you've understand what we're doing, can, I think we just need to move on, okay?
Right, I mean, there's, I guess there's no delaying it.
Thank you very much for coming up. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Spalding. We don't need to close public hearing, do we? Okay. This is an ordinance of first reading. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Some moved.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida relating to the Lauderdale Isles Water Management District ratifying and approving the creation and transfer of the district, providing for the charter of the district, amending the service area, providing for recitals, authority and modification of the district boundaries, providing for codification of scrivenor areas, modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearings, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that ordinance is now approved on first reading. OSR1, this is an ordinance on second reading. It's a quasi-judicial ordinance approving a rezoning from residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density district to northwest regional activity center mixed-use east district. This is 628 Northwest Third Avenue, east of Northwest Third Avenue, west of Northwest Second Avenue, and south of Northwest Seventh Street, and north of 610 Northwest Third Avenue. These are the Water Tower Apartments. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
Yes, I met with their attorney, Jason Crush.
Okay, Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
I also met with attorney Crush.
And Commissioner Glassman?
I have nothing additional, because this is the second reading, right?
It's the second reading.
Yeah, nothing additional.
And Vice Mayor?
Yeah, nothing additional.
And just nothing additional, I did meet with Courtney Crush, and I may have met with her client who participated. Other than that, any questions regarding this ordinance? If not, someone like to do.
Did you mean Jason Crush?
I'm sorry?
Did you mean Jason Crush?
One of the Crushes.
I don't think it was Courtney.
It was Courtney, I believe, yeah. Either one.
Crush law.
I had a crush on both of them, okay? Okay, Commissioner, you want to introduce the ordinance, since it's in your district?
I'd be happy to, but I always thought it was Jason Crush's project, but that's okay.
They look alike.
I'm good. Introduced.
You were, you have better jewelry.
She has a closer shave. Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll. Oh, wait, sorry. This is to close public hearing.
Close public hearing.
Yes, do I, I need a second?
Second.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Now would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Okay, the ordinance has now been introduced on second reading.
An ordinance amending section 47-1.6. B of the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale in Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto and by reference made a part thereof, so as to rezone from residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density district to northwest regional activity center mixed-use east district, all of last 37 through 48 block 321 progresso according to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book two, page 18 of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located west of Northwest Second Avenue, north of Northwest Sixth Street, east of Northwest Third Avenue, and south of Northwest Seventh Street, all said lands being the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the ordinance is now an ordinance on second reading. OSR2, second reading of ordinance, amending Unified Land Development Regulations Section 47-19.3 regarding boat slips, docks, boat davits, hoists, and similar mooring structures. And 47-39, Development Regulations for Annexed Areas and Adding Section 47-19.13 Resiliency Standards for Title Flood Protection. This is, I was requested to defer this to March 23rd. Someone like to move to defer?
Some moved.
It's been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, so this item has now been deferred to March 23rd, 2023. Mr. City Manager, do you have any further business? There's an add-on, right?
The add-on is for the undergrounding for District Two. We need the contractor to continue his services.
Okay.
Just to extend the terms of the expired contract.
Right, so Commissioner Glassman, would you like to introduce the item?
I'd be happy to. We, it's, we're a little delayed on this project. It was supposed to be completed in November. La Sola Siles undergrounding, they've been waiting 12 years since the process started. So I would love to see this keep moving, and whatever change orders need to come, I'd love to see those to come as soon as possible.
Okay, okay, just.
And we need to wrap this up before hurricane season, thank you.
Okay.
Well, I can't help it, what do you want to do?
When you're 70 years old, you tend to talk a little bit longer.
I'm as old as Five Ash, so don't get critical here, okay?
Okay, okay, okay. That was a motion, do I hear a second?
Seventy, and I have not lived past my useful life, just so you know.
Seconded, okay. No one signed up to speak? Any further comments? None? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Is there any further business?
Yes, a request for a closed door.
Closed door? Please announce the closed door.
Pursuant to Florida Statute Section 286.011 subsection A, subsection A, I am seeking advice in the following matters. State of Florida versus Stephen Poherance, case number 20-4040MM10A, and Anthony Ewell versus City of Fort Lauderdale at all, case number 20-60826SIVRNS, during the City Commission meeting of February 21st, 2023, at the time, at a time to be determined. Present at the attorney-client session will be Mayor Dean Trentalis, Vice Mayor Warren Sturman, Commissioner John C. Herbst, Commissioner Stephen Glassman, Commissioner Pam Beasley Pittman, City Manager Greg Chavara, interim City Attorney Dwayne M. Spence, outside counsel Michael T. Burke, Esquire of Johnson, and Silmo Etel, and certified court reporter from Bailey, at in court reporting. The estimated length of the session will be approximately 20 minutes.
Okay, may I just make a correction there? You'll recall that we moved our meeting from the 21st to the 23rd.
Noted, so during the commission meeting of, no.
Can we move it to the 23rd?
That's March, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so then, so that's in March, okay, I'm sorry. The 21st of February.
21st of February.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
City Manager Chavaria.
Okay.
Not Chavara, I believe it's Chavaria.
All right, thank you, thank you. Is there any further business, Mr. Spence?
No, sir.
Any further business of this commission? There being none, meeting's concluded, thank you.